All right. Good evening, everybody. We will call the Belvidere City Council Committee of the Whole of April 24, 2023 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Barrington?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank? Frank is absent. Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal? Mahal's absent. Porter?
Here.
Prather? Prather's absent. Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Oh, sorry, seven present.
Okay. Thank you. I don't believe we have anybody registered for public comment. We do not have a public forum this evening. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, public safety unfinished business, we have none. Item two, public safety, new business, police department update. Chief Woody, evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. So, since last month's update, the Fire and Police Commission met on April 13th. They appointed three new recruits to the Belvidere Police Department. Carlos Ochoa, Gerardo Venegas, and Evan Bendel. They replaced Officers Barillo, Deputy Chief Gardner, and Officer Moore. At that point, we have exhausted our list of 10 entry-level candidates, and we'll be testing again June 24th at the Belvidere High School. We will, the Belvidere Police Department will be conducting a swearing-in at the Community Building on April 27th at 10:00 a.m. There, we will be swearing in the three new recruits. We'll be promoting Detective King to Sergeant and appointing Sergeant Smaha to Deputy Chief. Detective King has been rotated from Detectives back to Patrol and is currently being mentored by Sergeant Ball in preparation for his promotion. Sergeant Ball will be replacing Sergeant Smaha as the Detective Sergeant on May 4th. K-9 Officer Rich Zaff has been assigned to Detectives. Officer Matt Corn has been assigned to be the next K-9 and is currently in Week Two of a six-week K-9 handler training. Sergeant Byrd will be graduating from Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command, and Jonathan Hernandez, entry-level candidate, recruit, will be graduating from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy on April 28th. The tuition for Sergeant Byrd to attend Staff and Command was covered by the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police at a savings to the city of $4,400. And the 2022 Annual Report for the Police Department is currently on Facebook and the city's website for you to view if you so choose. That concludes my report, and I will answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we're not going to get a hard copy of that like we usually do?
I can absolutely print that out if you'd like. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. And we'll move, thank you, Chief, we'll move to item B. Also, ordinance authorizing sale of squad cars. Chief Woody?
Thank you again, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, City Council, before you is an ordinance requesting to sell surplus Police Department vehicles. These vehicles have no operational values, currently utilizing valuable storage space. The first vehicle is a 2008 Dodge Durango with 190,000 miles, which has an undercarriage which is rusted through. A 2016 Kia Sorento, which has a cracked engine block, according to CUNIS, would cost us approximately $11,000 to fix. Kelley Blue Book estimates its value ranging from $10,300 to $12,300. Number three, a 2004 Dodge Intrepid, an old Volunteers and Policing vehicle, which won't start without mechanical work. A 2009 Dodge Charger, also another Volunteers and Policing vehicle, which won't start without mechanical work. A 2006 Cherokee TT, which is an old FEMA trailer that's been gutted. And a 2016 Dodge Charger with 87,600 actual miles, 12,000 engine hours, which equates to approximately 360,000 engine miles, which also has had approximately $9,500 in maintenance over its lifetime. And one of the vehicles that we've been experiencing to have engine block problems, which we've had to replace multiple of within that year of squad car. I would request a motion to authorize the mayor or his designee to sell the vehicles identified in Exhibit A by any means authorized by state statute, including but not limited to an internet auction site, other auction methods, or trade in for new vehicles.
All righty. Could I get a motion of that effect? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Flurry. Any questions for Chief Woody regarding the six vehicles that will be auctioned off? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Chief, do you have a rough ballpark, maybe estimate of the collective value of all of these?
No, not at this point. It would be our intention, CUNIS has offered to take these vehicles to auction for us, and until we get them to auction, there's really no value. It's a matter of what somebody's willing to pay for it. I can tell you that a majority of these vehicles aren't going to hold much value at all.
All right. Any other questions for Chief Woody? All right, then, we have a motion, and a second on the floor for the six vehicles, as the chief had mentioned. On the very back page are the associated VIN numbers that go with them, and this will come back in ordinance form then. Hearing no other questions, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? All right. Motion passed, thank you. And item C as well, Chief Woody, regarding Police Department Vacation Time Carryover. What is yours?
Thank you, Mayor. I would request vacation carryover for the three following individuals, Detective Casey Brooks, Sergeant David Byrd, Officer Jonathan Hernandez. Detective Brooks is on medical leave, which will continue through fiscal year 23 on April 30th, 2023. She currently has $19 hours of remaining vacation time. I'm requesting that this balance be carried over into fiscal year 24 due to her medical leave, which prevents her from using these hours. Sergeant David Byrd attended the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command from February 6th to April 28th, 2023. Due to his required attendance at the training, he was unable to use 37.25 hours of remaining vacation time, requesting that these hours be carried over into fiscal year 24. And Officer Jonathan Hernandez, who was hired on January 6th, 2023, has been attending basic law enforcement training at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy from January 9th to April 28th, 2023. Due to his required attendance, he has not been able to use the 24 hours of accumulated holiday time, requesting the hours be carried over into fiscal year 24. I would request a motion to authorize the carryover of unused vacation/holiday time in fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24 as shown below.
Thank you, Chief. Could I get a motion of that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Snow?
Curiosity, do they make the request through you that they want the carryover as opposed to just being paid out?
Yes. Historically, they make the request. We submit it to the council, and by contract, if the council denies that, then they're required to get that paid at overtime.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor then will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And moving on to item 2D on the next page, Fire Department Update, Chief Shadle. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor. Over the last 30 days, the Fire Department has responded to 271 calls, an average of about nine per shift. Included in those calls are five building fires. Those were all aid, where we aided other departments to their fires. We had a carbon monoxide incident. We had, did give CPR one time. 175 EMS calls. Four natural gas leaks. Seven car accidents with injuries. Eight car accidents without injuries. Four power lines down. Totalling, in addition to other incident types, 271 calls. Aid given and aid received. We gave aid those five times for those structure fires, and we received aid seven times. The aid given, we gave aid to District 3 for a fire, District 2, two fires, Rockton a fire, and Marengo for a fire. The aid received, six times we received aid from District 3 for an ambulance. And the last aid received, of course, was the Apollo collapse. For that response, there was 15 fire departments, two EMS agencies, two police agencies, Public Works, three dispatch centers, two utility companies, one medical doctor, and two support On April 6th, after the incident, we did host a Critical Incident Stress Management meeting for the individuals. Anytime individuals have, we have a critical incident, so we have a policy, what is a critical incident and what's not. Apollo, obviously, qualified. Basically, really bad calls, like the death of a child or someone you know, or multiple casualties, things like that. We have these, we have an outside agency come in, the Illinois Firefighters Peer Support Group, and they come in and they have trained professionals to lead these discussions. So, on April 6th, we had that at our station. There was 25 in attendance. It was, the invite went out to everybody that was right there, hands-on people, first in, and it was mostly comprised of firefighters, EMTs, and a dispatcher. So, last month's training, we actually started the Kelly Houses that you guys approved, that acquired structure, training agreement. So far, they've done vent and/or isolate search training and vertical ventilation training. Last month, we did electrical vehicle extrication training, radiation monitoring, and we did familiarization and pre-planning of the courthouse and jail, and then Franklin Display. For EMS, we trained on advanced airways. And then, also, on March 4th, we happened to do a walkthrough of the Apollo. We did that walkthrough, and then we actually went through at 7:00 p.m. that night because they had an event. Every once in a while, when they have a large event, we'll do a walkthrough, and we'll make sure that the egress is maintained and all the exits aren't blocked and things like that. So, we did that on March 4th. So, on a positive note, you guys have the handout from Captain Cunningham. The first event is the Fire Department hosted event at the fire station from noon to 2:00 on June 2nd. And the other one, Chad is throwing himself a big party, so, and you guys are all invited. All right, so, upcoming, obviously, next week, next Monday, we're providing the ambulance service, so there's been a lot of work. There's still a little bit of work to do. We're working on that, and we will be providing the service on May 1. Also, that first week of May, our new engine should arrive. So, it should arrive, I would expect about 30 days to actually end service, decal, get it all equipped before it is frontline, but it's coming soon, so. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Shadle? All right. All right, thank you, Chief. And then, item E is also Fire Department issue, authorization to hire a fire inspector. Chief Shadle?
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys. So, this is an item that was budgeted for, and we did briefly discuss it during the budget preview night. So, essentially, there's three things that I knew right away, that as Fire Chief, that I felt we needed to put into place to make sure that we're able to provide, carry out our mission and provide excellent service. So, the first one was the engine, and that's coming. The second was, we had to change over our RMS, our records management software, which is quite a process, but we got that taken care of. And now is the time that I am requesting a full-time inspector. So, in your handout with that memo, if you'll look at the next page, you'll see that there's roughly 628 buildings that it would be nice if we were able to walk through on a somewhat frequent basis. Right now, we're handling our inspections by the full-time firefighters. They do them on duty. They do them on overtime, when they're off shift. There's four inspectors in the department, and they are doing a good job. They do, they prioritize the highest priority. Right now, the highest priority is anything brand-new that comes in. It has to be reviewed for their sprinkler systems, their fire protection systems. So, obviously, we don't want to delay any construction in the city, so those are priority. And then, target hazards, and then things that come up by request and things like that. But you'll see in the future pages, if you skip past that, to the first graph is compliant versus deficient systems. You'll see a number of systems that are deficient. Currently, we don't have the manpower to follow up on those. If you'll skip that, well, that next one is deficient systems by type, for your information. And the next one is current versus past due systems. So, unfortunately, what's happening is these past due systems, we utilize the Breyer, Bricer Compliance Engine. They send notice out to the businesses and say, hey, these are the fire protection systems you have on file. Have your alarm company or whoever's inspect these, send paperwork that you've completed that. Since we're unable to follow up on these, the number of past dues has been inching higher and higher and higher, and I suspect until we have someone that can inspect these buildings on an annual basis, all 628 of them, I think this will be the case. And so, that is definitely will be priority one for this new full-time inspector. And then, if you skip past that next graph, you'll see a draft job description for this individual. And it would be a 40-hour individual, and be a non-sworn, full-time fire inspector. And with your permission, I would request the following motion. Motion to authorize the city to hire one full-time, non-sworn Fire Department Inspector, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Flurry. And if there's any questions for Chief Shadle, Alderman Porter?
Just one, Chief. I was curious here, the salary range, $56,365, how does that compare to other municipalities? About the same?
So, we do have a study, and it's not in this, I can provide it for you. Captain Letourneau is our inspection coordinator. He was kind enough to provide all this information. I think it's a reasonable request. It kind of depends on the setup. So, there are a few area departments where the inspector is chief, like in Cherry Valley. So, he's a deputy chief, and that's his role of inspections. Obviously, salary's quite a bit higher than that. And then, in Rockford, it's a promoted position at Rockford Fire. So, again, it would be higher salary than that. I know for one department that contracts that individual out, the total cost for that contract's about $90,000, but that also includes benefits and things like that. There's other departments that do it on overtime, like ours, or they have FLSA 7G exemptions, attorney drill, is that what it is? 7G. So, I believe it's FSLA exemption 7G, which basically says if a firefighter is working on an alternate duty, you can negotiate the wage for that, and then it would just be hours paid at that wage. That salary happens to be the starting firefighter salary. That's just what we landed on, and we will test the market. Obviously, if we can't find anybody at that salary, then we'll have to explore options at that time. But I'm hoping that with that salary plus the competitive benefits package offered to city employees, I think it's a good, fair deal for somebody.
Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. So, if we hire this person, so you said, right now, there's currently four firefighters that are authorized to do inspections. Would they continue doing inspections along with this one to try to bring that down?
Yes, absolutely. I've communicated to them as well that this isn't an attempt to replace what they do. There is quite a few advantages to having the on-duty firemen do those, knowing the buildings, bringing that information in-house, and, you know, responding and all that being tied together. And also, there's just going to be more work than this individual can do, so those four will still be primarily working on new construction and kind of the things they were doing, where this full-time employee would be focused really on these annual walkthroughs, annual pre-plan updates, and all this, trying to get caught up with these annual tasks. So, they will still continue to be inspectors, they'll still do what they do on duty and off duty. In addition to what they do, this individual would do these tasks.
Okay. Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So, Chief, I have two things. So, this is a non-sworn city salaried employee, so not a union member?
That's correct. He wouldn't be a sworn firefighter, but on the other hand, he would be not doing, or we wouldn't request him to do any firefighter duties. He won't have turnout gear, he won't have SCBA radios, potentially a radio. But those, it's a completely different line of work than the current union firefighters are doing. The union inspectors realize the gap, they realize they can't do all this, and they're very supportive of this. It's something that I've communicated with them all the way through, and they are, in person to me, very supportive of the idea.
Continue.
Thank you. And then, I know it's been a struggle for us to keep up on these inspections for a long time now, but it says the candidate will work under the supervision and direction of the Fire Department Inspections Coordinator, which would be Captain Letourneau. So, he will be the one that does the interviews and actual hiring process?
Yeah, Captain Letourneau and myself would primarily be making, doing the interviews and seeing what type of response we have, but yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Shadle? Okay, I know when Chief and I had a discussion about this, one of my concerns was what was already voiced here this evening about, you know, collective bargaining and what have you. And the chief has answered that. He's assured me that that isn't an issue, and I appreciate that. He's conveyed that here this evening. And then, also, you know, we have 289 inspections that are past due, and we have not been able to make up ground with them. Chief, would you comment on some of the risks that are involved by not being able to address these and, or letting them go? I think that's important.
Sure. So, basically, if something is delinquent, we have no idea if the fire protection systems that are required by code and in place because of code are working. So, that could be emergency lighting, sprinkler test, fire pumps, things like that. It could be, could be a large corporation with a lot of employees. It could be, you know, a building with five employees, that their alarm system wasn't checked. But all those codes in the IFC 2015, almost every single code that was written there is because something, something bad happened, and they're like, well, let's try and do better next time. So, those would be the types of things that would potentially, and then going back to the deficiencies, those deficiencies are actual systems that they did submit the information, but on, when it was tested, it was deficient. So, those were actually not working. So, you have those that aren't working, and then you have the ones that you don't know about. So, those are the differences there. And then, the in-person inspection also quickly identifies common hazards that you can't just get from knowing that the systems are working. For example, we've gone on fire calls and had to reset the alarm panel, and lo and behold, the entire exit is filled up with crates of Gatorade, and we got to move, like a pallet of Gatorade to even get to the panel to shut it off, and then that emergency exit's completely blocked. So, any modifications, alterations to the building, if we're not stepping foot in those buildings, we won't know that. A lot of times, for the building department, those inspections are triggered when they request a permit, right? But they, the assumption is, is that they're keeping everything else in line, so unless you have someone that's physically going in, following up, and saying, hey, we noticed that you have some deficiencies, are they corrected? Oh, great. Or if not, well, let's, let me educate you on how you can correct them. And then, or, the next one's, that second graph, you haven't submitted your paperwork, now we're going to need it submitted by, you know, a reasonable timeframe, and then so correcting those. And then, once they're submitted and And then, once they're submitted and deficiency, so there's a whole, each one of these could be multiple follow-ups. And so, as you can see, one full-time individual will slowly chop this big tree down over time, but that would be the intent.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for Chief Shadle? Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. One more, Chief. So, if your inspector goes into a building and finds that there's chemicals in that building that you didn't know were there, or they're not stored properly, or there's other hazards going on, what happens? They get a ticket, they'd get time to fix that, remedy it?
So, obviously, there's certain levels of deficiencies. There's, if it's a life safety code, like an immediate life hazard, there's times that it has to be fixed while you're, while you're there. If it's a blocked means of egress, you know, they will be, okay, we will fix this right now. You know, if the, every company has to submit by law Tier Two reports, which state any hazardous materials that they have. And so, you know, if that changed, that there would have to be some sort of process, a reasonable process, to go in. Obviously, we work for the community, and we also work for those business owners, right? Like, we work for them, so our number one goal is to help them into compliance with reasonable, or sometimes the less, the least expensive way to become compliant, and so exploring those options. So, it would definitely be a case-by-case situation, but if there's an immediate life threat, then we would not leave until it was corrected.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chief Shadle? All right. Hearing none, the motion on the floor, and then, that we have in front of us is to authorize the city to hire one full-time, non-sworn fire department inspector. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? All right, motion passed, thank you. And we have item F, authorization to fill firefighter upcoming vacancy, Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you guys see in the notice, Captain Cunningham is retiring. With his retirement, there will be an individual promoted to captain, and then a firefighter promoted to lieutenant, thereby creating a vacancy of a firefighter, one shift will be down to eight, once Chad leaves. By authorizing to fill this role a few weeks early, what we'll be able to do is avoid some overtime costs of the orientation. Now, we have an individual that is pretty close. He has a final medical exam. Upon successfully completing the medical exam, he'll be brought to a police and fire commission meeting, where he would be hired, so long as there's a slot available. So, what I'm requesting for you guys is to motion to authorize the city to fill the upcoming firefighter vacancy on or after May 15th, 2023.
Okay, could I get a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Flurry. Any questions regarding that motion on the floor? All right. Makes good sense. Thank you, Chief. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And Chief, item G, fire department vacation, I'm sorry, fire department vacation time carryover.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two firefighters that have some vacation time left on the books. The first one is Corey Mitchell, and firefighter Mitchell received three days upon completion of his first year, which was at the beginning of March. So, he received those days, the calendar was already full, so there was no slots available for him to take that time without causing overtime. So, I'm requesting that those three days be carried over. And then, the second one is firefighter Thornton. So, every quarter or so, we do a reconciliation of vacation time, and a clerical error occurred, whereas he was asked to take two of his days off of the calendar. And then, by the time that the error was discovered, the calendar was full. So, he was unable to take those two days off. So, due to the clerical error, I am requesting that his two days are carried over. So, the requested motion is approval for five vacation days from FY '23 to carry over to FY '24, three of which are Mitchell's, and two of which are Thornton's.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding that? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion on the floor to approve the five vacation days for year '23 to carry over for, for year '24. Please answer yes.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay. Motion passed, thank you. And I assume, Chief, that probably we won't have any issues going forward with clerical errors, probably?
I can't promise anything. I hope not. We'll try and do better.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Item H, fire department, the Apollo response, Chief? Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Your Honor. As we, each fire department update, go over calls of the past month, I think that this call here deserves some information for, for the council to hear. I know oftentimes, you guys get asked, well, what about this, this, and this? And sometimes, you guys might feel like you're not the first to know good information. So, I just wanted to get some information to you, the council members, on this incident. And the first thing I would say is, obviously, that this is a tragedy. A father, a brother, you know, one individual lost his life. Forty-eight people were treated in the hospital. A lot of those people have a long road ahead of them, they had some major injuries. So, I'm not taking away from that, but what I am going to talk about is the response, and overwhelmingly, a lot of things did go really well, as far as the response. So, I didn't want to take away from the seriousness of the incident. The other thing is, last Tuesday, I received confirmation that all persons were treated and released from the hospital, which was very, very good news. We were following up every couple of days on that. Initially, there were, you know, five, five people in critical care, you know, in intensive care unit. And there, originally, there was two that were not supposed to make it through the night. So, because of the excellent care of the doctors and the surgeons and the care teams, they, they did, they did. And then, they not only made it through the night, but they're released from the hospital. So, that's a great update that I wanted to give you guys, that. So, the call itself came in at 7:48, and the incident type was a structural collapse due to a direct hit from a tornado. It was right directly in the path. As I said, it caused 48 injuries, severe enough to warrant hospital care, and those individuals were treated in five hospitals. There were 27 agencies involved in the response, and 26 patients transported by EMS services Basically, what I provided for you guys is some color photos from the incident. Some of those are from the Belvidere Police Department and Orboon County Sheriff's drone footage of the building. You can see the extent of the damage and exactly where the damage was located. That first chart, that is actually a handwritten chart, shows the agencies involved and what they responded to, what they responded with to the incident. On the next chart, you guys can see the actual EMS transports and the hospitals' designations. You can see that Cape and Rescue transported five patients, Cherry Valley Fire Department transported three, Harlem Rosco transported one, Lifeline Elite transported eight, Loves Park Fire transported two, North Boone District Three ambulance transported five, and North Park Fire Department transported two patients. That next graph, you'll see that eight of those patients went to Mercy, three red patients, four yellow, and one green. So, a red patient, just in general, if you guys don't do triage all the time. A red patient is somebody that is an immediate threat of loss of life. So, those are your priority patients. So, there's, when you triage someone, and basically, they, they're in decompensated shock, like their body is failing to keep them alive, that's what you look for quickly. And then, you identify those patients as fast as you can, prioritize, and then those red ones are the ones you want to get to a Level One center. You want those reds to be the first ones out, and that is what happened that night. You'll see St. Anthony, which is our closest Level One center, had eight red patients transported there, and four yellow, yellow patients, for a total of 12. Swedish American Rockford had five yellow patients, and Swedish American Belvidere had one green patient transported, for a total of 26 patients. One particular thing about that event is setting up the EMS branch really early helped in this situation, and not only was it set up early, but those in charge of it, which were two District Two firefighters, they quickly handled all the information, and then divided up the patients and told them, okay, this patient, send to this hospital, this patient, send to this hospital. So, one of the great causes of that success was not sending all the patients to a random hospital. So, we learned a lot at the Jackson Street Fire. In 2017, we had, I think, 13 or 15 transports, and it happened very differently back then. Back then, everybody just got in the ambulance, and they just went, and patients that went to Swedish American Belvidere probably should have went to OSF, or all the patients went to one place. We learned a lot, and we've been training a lot on how to best handle these mass casualty incidents. So, the fire and police have, really because of the nature of society, been working with mass casualty incidents and usually active shooter. But that triage is the same, no matter what the cause, of the mass casualty incident. So, that's something I know both of our departments have been really working on since 2017, when we identified through an after-action report, hey, we could probably do this better. So, in this situation, you'll see that most of the reds went to a Level One. And you also notice that the patients were pretty evenly distributed. One of the first phone calls that night, very first thing you do in the EMS branch is you find out which hospitals can take one level of patients. And I overheard, the first call was St. Anthony's, and they said they can take eight reds, and at that time, we had five red patients. So, I knew we were, we were going to be okay with that. And so, that's how, how that transpired that night. If you look at that last, looks like a tree diagram, one second. So, that tree diagram basically shows the different, what's called branches of the instant command system. So, instant command system's actually defined nationally through NIMS. If you guys remember the last class you guys had sent me to, and I appreciate it, it was Command and Control of Natural and Man-made Disasters. So, that, that class I attended in August in Maryland, and it talked about creating branches, divisions, and groups for large incidents. This is something also the other officers have been exposed to over time, a lot because of the 2017 Jackson Street Fire. We said, well, we're going to learn how to do this, and we're going to make sure all our officers know how to do that. And we did. So, that, that night, there was the search and rescue branch that Dan Droll oversaw, which was the main operation. And then, there was the medical branch that I just discussed, and then the TRT branch, which did the secondary searches of all the buildings, also tried to help see if the buildings were safe to be occupied, or get some status updates for that. And then, another branch that was created that I didn't know until afterwards, so, but it was kind of like the angel branch. I know that's not the right word, but listen to what they did. So, as we were overwhelmed, District Two has a lot of firefighters, and they have a lot of chiefs and a lot of officers. Well, a big group of them had stayed at the station and said, you know, we're going to kind of be the protectors of the county. Now, as part of our boxcars, we do have Moringo comes to backfill our stations with a engine, a paramedic engine to run calls while we're obligated to a scene. And then, we had, you know, Kingston there as well, with an engine and ambulance providing that. But during the scene, we had a major gas leak at Chrysler. So, the tornado had ripped air conditioner units off the roof of the Synchrogram building, and it was spewing natural gas. We had two separate elevator rescues. We had a gas leak investigation. We had an automatic fire alarm, and then we also had multiple trees down on Parkside Manor. So, all of those calls were all taken care of, and I just heard them getting responded to with appropriate amounts of resources, and I was, I was thankful of that, that night. And so, what I had found out is that they were supplementing all those responses with, with appropriate vehicles, chiefs, and everything, to make sure that everything got, got met. There was also a bad car accident in District Three, and that was one of the first calls they went to. The call came in, and they were there, and no one was responding, no one was responding. And they said, well, we're going to respond, we're going to take care of it. So, all in all, we had really good people in really good places, and when we look at the next, next slide, the number one thing that I put down was reasons why it was successful is the relationships. Through Auto-8 agreements and MABUS agreements, we've, we've worked with all these guys, especially the other Boone County agencies. We meet on a frequent basis and, and talk to them, and that we, I know them, they know me, and, and we help each other out, and that was extremely evident that night. Also, you know, like having the medical branch run by District Two. I, I knew those individuals, I knew that they could handle that. I asked Chief Guns, he said, what do you need? When he got there, I said, we need a medical branch, and he says, these two guys. And I'm like, yep, and I, I knew they could do it, because I, because I knew them. Dan and our guys were all inside, all hands on deck. At least 10 people were pulled from rubble. So, at, at least 10 people needed rescue. And again, it was our guys and the police department, and 20 bystanders, all, all in that building, with risks of, I mean, the storm had just happened, risks of loose brick or loose debris in there. There were, all those people were really risking their lives to help others, which is the greatest example of how people should be. And so, all in all, there was four branches operating on six separate radio channels that night. Dan was managing two, I had three of them, and then, you know, as I said, District Two actually requested that all their operations be done on fire too. So, that was because they didn't want to slow anything or have too much communication going on, on our, our systems there. So, it was a well-coordinated effort, because the right people in the right places. One other significant factor in the success was MD One coming to that incident. MD One is an emergency doctor, and the MD One is provided by Mercy. It's, it's two emergency physicians, and they're always on call, so they take turns, and they're in So, they take turns, and they're an asset for this whole area for no cost. And you call them, and you have an emergency doctor on your scene. He ran the triage that night. He oversaw that whole big group of people and made sure that the most critical patients got to where they needed to be. And then, even going before that, you guys will see on that chart of why it was successful, preparation and notification. So, all of the hospitals since, there was a bad incident a while ago, and they said, "Let's have an MCI plan, and we all work together." And so, relationships, again. So, they all worked together. They actually put the hospitals on standby when they got the tornado warning, which means that they called extra surgeons, they called extra nurses, and then put them on standby. They took not-critical patients and cleared out the trauma rooms so that they could handle a large influx. And then, when they got notified that we had a mass casualty, they just did everything that they practiced. And that is another huge reason those doctors and surgeons and nurses that came in from home that night or drove in, probably left their basement to drive in that night to provide surgery for all those people. That was definitely a critical factor to the well-being of all the people that were injured that night. And then, I'll conclude briefly. I did already touch on this, but the preparations this year in January. Our department members, you know, they train two hours in a four-hour window every single day. So, twice this year already, we've trained on triage and mass casualty. We had an active shooter MCI class. And then we had a rescue task force, which is more related to active shooter. But anytime we talk about those, we talk about triage. So, already twice this year, we had practiced triage. So, the last thing I have there is skilled responders. You know, we're very, very blessed in this entire county, in this entire area, to have skilled responders. And that night was a tragedy. The response was overwhelmingly good and plentiful, and everybody did what they were trained to do. And so, I just wanted to make sure you guys, as council, were aware of everything that happened that night. And so, I'll be happy to answer any questions. But that concludes my update on the Apollo.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Shadell? Right. Well, I have to say, Chief, that I was down there early that evening. I did receive a call from Chief Woody and had went down there. And I will tell you that it was what appeared to be, and it was a chaotic situation, quickly became an organized rescue. You know, a treat to be able to rescue, to treat, to triage, and then to transport. And I witnessed that. And I couldn't be more proud of our, both departments, our EMS responders, Police Department responded rapidly, and of course, our Fire Department. And I think you might sell yourself a little bit short. Nobody likes to be their own cheerleader. But I will tell you that also, that, you know, the way that you had that organized and everything, from having triage at Station One, taking patients in and having, making sure that patients were directed with their injuries, making sure that the hospitals could receive them, working with Dr. Smatana regarding. Quite frankly, I was amazed that you could find all the time to be so many places at once. And I was just kind of standing there on my crutches, watching you go here and there. And it was very, very impressive. I couldn't be, I couldn't be prouder. And I think the community also had seen how this chaotic, you know, disaster, in spite of the fact that it was tragic. You're right, we lost one individual. And, but I will guarantee you that without the response that we had, it would have been much, much, it could have been much, much worse. So, I think, if you would, commend all your troops, Chief Woody as well, and District Two as well. I know District Two, you had mentioned how much good help you had. And we did have a lot of good help. And certainly, what situation could have been a lot worse was prevented. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it, both of you, Chief Woody and Chief Shadell. And rank and file, and on behalf of the city of Belvedere, we're fortunate. We really are, because this one could have went the other way. And from the very start, it was organized and professional, and the response was planned and what you had mentioned, what you had trained for. And I was so impressed. So, thank you. All right. We have Item I, Special Olympics Athlete Parade Request, and that is in your packet. And I guess it's self-explanatory. Director Jen Jackie is here from the Belvedere Township Park District. She could probably field any questions if she has to. But if I could get a motion on the floor. The event is going to be Monday, May 22. The hours, as the informational states, will start at 5:30 and at 6:00 p.m., 5:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. The route will kick off at Pacemaker Parking Lot, travel down Pearl Street, make a right on First Avenue, and drop off participants at the Community Building. So, they're asking for approval of this parade permit. Could I get a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions for anybody this evening? I appreciate Director Jackie coming down here. I don't see any questions. It's a great event, so thank you very much. Hearing no questions, all those in favor of the motion then, to approve the parade for May 22nd, Monday, May 22nd, from 5:30 to 6:00 p.m. for the Special Olympics Athlete Parade. Please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed. Motion passed, thank you. And we also have then Item J, a block party request for Cloverdale Way. And as in the informational in front of you, on your desk, in your packet, that is for Sunday, May 28th, 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And there'll be music, bags, volleyball, soccer, bouncy house. Sounds like a pretty good time. Could I get a motion to approve that, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed. Okay. Motion passed, thank you. And then we have Item K, block party request at 407 East Fourth Street. That will be on 610 of 23, from noon to 8:00 p.m. That's for the first birthday party. They're asking for the street to be blocked between Caswell and Fremont. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions or concerns regarding that request form the motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed. Okay. Motion passed, thank you. And Item, Item Three, Finance and Personnel and Finish Business, we have none. Item Four, Finance and Personnel, New Business, under A, Finance Department Update. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few updates to share. Last fall, the IRS conducted an audit of the city's 2020 employment tax returns. I'm pleased to report we have received verbal and now written confirmation. No changes are necessary, and the examination is now complete. Next item, we are in the process of gathering and providing information to both Sickich and Lauterbach as part of the fiscal year '23 audits. Sickich will be on-site May 10th and 11th to begin their preliminary fieldwork and will return for two weeks in June. And then my final update, time will be spent this week preparing the city's ARPA annual report, which must be submitted by April 30. As you'll recall, council approved the use of ARPA funds as part of the first distribution received in fiscal year '22. Those projects are $600,000 for the Southwest Tower rehabilitation, $700,000 for engineering fees and initial construction costs for the primary clarifier upgrades, and about $245,000 towards the purchase of the fire engine. A portion of these funds came back in the form of proceeds from the sale of the mini pumper last fall. The remaining balance of the first ARPA payment remains unused, and the second payment received this fiscal year has been deposited into a short-term CD and also remains available for city projects and operating needs.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Any questions for Finance Director Hanson? All right. Appreciate your hard work. Thank you. Item Five, under Other, we have Item A, Public Works Farmington Ponds 2023 Maintenance Agreement. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, 2023 Maintenance for our Farmington Ponds. The estimate for this year is $16,000, which was the same estimate as was last year. Cost for that last year, as you see today, is $15,243.11. So, they're pretty close to the original estimate. Therefore, I would recommend entering in agreement with Lakeland Biologists for the 2023 Farmington Ponds Maintenance Program at an estimated cost of $16,000. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Special Service Areas, and the budget for this work is $22,700.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding that motion? Nice to know something didn't go up. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Director Anderson, we have $22,000 budgeted, but this $16,000 is just an estimate. So, could we potentially go over budget on this?
There's always that potential, correct. And then other items, there's electricity that's used for the aeration systems out there that's included in that budget. And then also, the mowing of those areas is included as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right. Hearing none, we have a motion then on the floor, entering in agreement with Lakeland Biologists 2023 for the 2023 Farmington Ponds Maintenance Program at an estimated cost of $16,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Item B, the General Mills Park Basketball Court Bid Tabulation. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor, for getting memo in your packet. In spring of 2022, the city received a grant from General Mills in the amount of $25,000 for improvements at the General Mills Park. And those improvements, including the construction of a basketball court. Last fall, we subgraded the site and installed the base, stone base, and now we are ready for the asphalt surfacing. We received three bids to complete that work. And I would recommend approval of a little bid from Bell Rock Asphalt Paving in the amount of $9,672.22 for paving of the new basketball court at General Mills Park. And again, this work will be paid for from the $25,000 grant received from General Mills.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Stevens. Alderman Snow, questions, comments? Alderman Snow?
So, would the rest of the money be used to put up the pole and stripe it, things like that?
Yep. We have striping of the court to do. We'll have to get the basketball hoops and the poles. And then depending on the remaining balance will be for further park improvements as well. And we will come back to council for expenses of those funds as well.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for Chief Woody. I know that we used to have a skate park behind the Dairy Row Ball and Dottie Park. It has some issues. Do you have any issues, vandalism, anything like that with this park at all?
No, nothing that would be something worth mentioning. I mean, we get your typical types of graffitis or, you know, neighborhood disputes or, you know, kids fighting, but nothing that sticks out that would be consistent problems with this particular park, no?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right. I would like to recognize General Mills for their gracious donation, contribution for this. As Brent, Mr. Anderson, had said, it'd be paid for from a $25,000 grant that they made. So, how nice is that? So, appreciate it to General Mills. If there are no other questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Item C, Public Works Tornado Sirens 2023 Maintenance Agreement with Branoff, Braniff, excuse me, Braniff Communications. Mr. Anderson?
Again, in your packet is the proposal from Braniff for this year's maintenance agreement in the amount of $6,030 at $670 per unit. Just as a reference, last year's price was $640 per unit. So, that is about a 4.6% increase. But based on what we're seeing for pricing, that's right in the ballpark where one would expect that to be. We have $6,800 budgeted for the tornado sirens in the current, in the upcoming budget. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the proposal from Braniff Communications for the 2023 tornado siren maintenance at a cost of $6,030.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Stevens?
Hey, Leafy, know they work now because they worked the other night.
And we know how important it is that they do work.
First Tuesday of the month, 10 o'clock.
Yep. All right. If there are no other questions regarding the motion on the floor for Mr. Anderson or anybody else? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Item D, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Item D, Planning Zoning Comprehensive Plan Agreement for Professional Services, House Seal Levine Associates LLC. I guess I would entertain a motion first regarding that in order to kick off discussion. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Stevens. Gina, would you like to comment, please? This has been a long, arduous process.
Yes. So, I will keep a long story short, but feel free to ask questions. Staff has been trying to update our comprehensive plan for about five years now. Had not been successful in the past with the consultant. Basically, you should be updating your comp plan every 10 years. Ours is from 1999, and there was an update in 2006. That update was very progressive, very forward-thinking. Nothing wrong with it at that time. Obviously, a lot has happened since 2006, the recession, COVID, stuff like that. It's not really a valid plan anymore. And I get phone calls, we are in meetings with developers, and usually, the first thing out of their mouth is, "Well, I know our idea doesn't meet your comp plan, but hopefully, you'll hear us out." In which we always say, "Of course." But how many developers are not even calling us because they're seeing our comp plan and thinking, "Oh, we won't go against it. It's not worth it." So, I think it's really vital to get a functioning comp plan out there. So I think it's really vital to get a functioning comp plan out there. Some things that I want changed is our current comp plans, like 200-some-odd pages. It's intimidating, it's cumbersome. This consultant is looking at doing about 50 pages. You know, there's like 30 different land use categories in the current comp plan. It's very pigeonholed, where this will be a little bit more vague. That way, the developers can come talk to us and we can decide if that's something we want. It won't be so pigeonholed. I did go out for RFPs last year so that it would, and it was part of this current year's budget. I went out for RFPs, extended the timeline on their RFPs a little bit. House Levine submitted a good response. Then Stellantis made their proposal. Obviously, that's a huge impact on the growth of our community. So kind of wanted to wait a little bit till we got a better feel for what is going on with Stellantis and some of the other growth options in the area. In the meantime, Shannon put half the funding in the next year's budget, knowing that it wouldn't get completed in time. And now we're really pushing to get anything in this year's budget. I'm trying, Shannon. So basically, House Levine submitted it. They are very reputable. One thing I liked about them is they work a lot with smaller communities that are close to larger communities. They've worked in Huntley, McHenry, New Lennox, Mokena, Shanahan. So those are all mid-sized communities like us along major highways like us, somewhat in the shadow of a larger community like us. So they're very familiar with what Belvidere is. They've also worked in Freeport, in Rockford, in Maringo. So they're familiar with this area as well. They're just not a suburban consultant. And as far as their traffic proposal aspect of the comp plan, they will be teaming up with Kim Lee Horn, who I worked with them when I interned in Tinley Park a lifetime ago. So Kim Lee Horn is a longstanding traffic consultant with a very good reputation. So I, I was, like I said, I was happy with their response. I'm happy with their history and their familiarity with towns like Belvidere. So we won't get a Chicago comp plan, you know, given to us or something that belongs even more rural than us. So I would recommend approval to move forward with this proposal.
Okay, motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman McGee. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. It's not even that late yet. All right, questions? Alderman Flurry was first, you had your hand up?
He's making the motion that I made.
Okay, well, look, so. All right, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Gina, can you talk about what a comp plan consists of? Is it like zoning and land use and what else?
Yep, so comp plans can, can vary. But the, the bread and butter of a comp plan is your future land use. It is to say this, so it's not just the immediate city limits. It's kind of that mile and a half or however far out we want to extend of our future growth. That is feasible in the next 10 to 15 years, stating this is where we want our commercial growth, this is where we want our residential growth, this is where we want our residential growth. These are where our new road connections should be. And then it can also give goals and objectives like your historic preservation could be stronger, your traffic corridor could be stronger. We recommend your zoning code be amended to encourage transit-oriented development or to encourage mixed-use development. It can also be used as a marketing tool. I know we've discussed in the past with economic development, tourism, all that stuff. We don't really have a marketing tool. And right now, I cannot give a 200-page document to anyone to say, here's how great Belvidere is, you should come to us. Where this, I've talked to them over the phone, there will probably be a couple pages that are, would almost be like detachable that that way we could hand out to people. You have at the booth, at the fair, and stuff like that to use for marketing materials. But yeah, the bread and butter of a comp plan is your future zoning and your future road connection. It's also what Brent would use for when he does his infrastructure, when you're planning your new sewer and your walls. You should have an idea of where your development's going to be so that way you know what kind of well capacity you should have. I mean, I just, I finally read that study you put on my desk like a month ago that talked about with anticipated industrial growth, this is what your water usage would be and can your current well handle it? So all those studies kind of go back to your comp plan for that data.
Alderman Snow?
And what time, what kind of timeframe do you anticipate this?
About six to nine months, they will, they will be coming to Belvidere. It will not all be done through Google Street View and Zoom meetings because I am just tired of Zoom meetings. So there will be two joint meetings, most likely special meetings with the City Council and Plant Commission invited so that you guys will be apprised of the situation every, you know, step of the way and you'll have feedback. There will be a community input. And then there'll probably be some meetings with stakeholders while they gather some data.
Alderman Porter?
So you're saying six to nine months till it's completed?
Correct, and then it'll go through a public hearing at Plant Commission and then City Council for a vote.
I know Gina has mentioned her, some frustration. When I first come into office, I know she had mentioned to me that we needed a comp plan. Obviously, things have changed since the last one we had done. And it's long overdue, but it will be timely as we, we continue to see opportunities with new growth. And it won't be a 200-page document that pigeonholes us or, you know, forces us not to be able to entertain what would be good common sense development, good for the community. And in a number, for a number of reasons why, actually. So I'm glad Gina's worked very hard on it, and she's done a great job. So hopefully, we'll have this in six to nine months. And we'll be able to use it as a tool, certainly with any development that is considering coming to our community. And it'll be, it'll be long overdue and very helpful, so. All right, thank you, Gina. So we need a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And item E, I had, when I had ran for election, there were some things that I wanted to address. And I had actually put those in, I had put those in as ideas that I had. And they still hold true today. They're not, maybe we've had a lot of busy, a lot of other issues that have gotten in the way, but I think it's a good time. It's almost the two-year, half midterm point here. And I think it's a good time to probably bring this to fruition for a number of reasons, or at least bring it up for discussion. The solid waste collection, so garbage service in the city of Belvidere. As everybody's aware, we have individuals, businesses that collect individuals' garbage. There may be three, four, five different companies. A lot of times, they'll cross each other's path as they collect the garbage. And I do know that their fees have went up, they've went up quite a bit. And I hear that. I get calls and I get email submissions from individuals that say, you know, my garbage services went up exponentially. And I was wondering if the city would consider how we could maybe improve the service, less wear and tear on our streets. It doesn't make sense to me, never has made sense, that one truck passes another. And I do know in other communities, they have, you know, created an agreement, a contract with providers that give the taxpayers a break, make it less expensive for them. And that doesn't even take into consideration when you have to figure about, figure out what we pay for that over the garbage trucks on the streets, just, you know, they create wear and tear. So I thought it was probably a good time to at least kick this off. It is preliminary. We're going to get some more information to you, so I won't have anything tonight. But I did want to get it on the agenda. It was a promise that, that I had made, and I intend on keeping it. And whatever that information bears out, council will have a decision to make in the future whether or not it in fact is worth it. And we'll see what that brings us in the near future, so. Anyhow, with that being said, there's nothing else on the agenda for this evening. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Porter, thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening, thank you for your time. For the record, we adjourned at 7:19 PM. Thank you.